October 2nd, 2023, it is 7:05. I'll call this town meeting to order. I will entertain a motion to admit visitors. Ms. Gonzalez.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following non-registered voters or visitors be admitted to the meeting. Rob Carbone, NORCAM, Freedom of the Floor. Maureen Doherty, North Reading Transcript, Freedom of the Floor. And further, that the following non-registered voters be admitted to the meeting and permitted to sit with the officials and departments they serve. Susan Duplin, Town Clerk. Stephanie Conley, Assistant Town Clerk. Carol Ducrow, Staff. Danielle McKnight, Town Planner. Patrick Daly, Superintendent of Schools. Darren Klein, KP Law, Town Counsel. Matthew Cooper. Lillian Hartman. Eleanor Richard. Joseph Parisi. Sorry. Todd Waco. Mark Zimmerman. Debbie Carbone. Thomas Romeo. Robert Carbone. Maryam McKay. Jason Smith. Sophia Navalov. Piper Kerwin. Patrick Daly. Danielle McKnight. Dan O'Donnell. And Matt Prince.
On the motion to admit, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? The guests may come in. For tonight, the visitors sit to the right, but if you are involved with a town board or committee, would sit to my right in front of the Board of Selectmen, or you may sit down in front with your table if you're part of the school committee or whatever. Everybody should be wearing a badge. Registered voters are wearing a yellow badge. Visitors are wearing a black badge. In the event, we have to take a hand count tonight. There are two tellers. Lori Capazudo will count on my left, and Chris Hayden will count on my right. So Lori will count the front, back, on this side of the divider, and Chris will count on the other side. If you're seeking recognition, please go to the microphones, wait to be recognized, state your name and address for the record, and please speak to the motion on the floor. If all are guests.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
How much time do I have?
What recognition are you seeking?
I'm seeking recognition for address of the previous meeting minutes.
It's not allowed at this meeting. Thank you.
Since my experience at the meeting on the 12th of June.
Excuse me. Please take a seat.
We have once again ratcheted up.
Please take a seat, or I'll have you removed from the meeting.
And we see useless mask mandates and deadly COVID shot mandates back on the horizon. On Bacon Hill, legislators are debating mandates to add deadly COVID shot to the list of required shots to attend public school. For the past two-plus years, I have provided town officials and employees reams of peer reviewed medical literature showing the mortal dangers to our children of useless masks and the mortal danger to our children of negatively effective COVID shots.
If you do not stop, I will have you removed from the meeting.
At this late hour, any move by the town.
Can he be removed from the meeting, please?
To blindly follow CDC or Massachusetts mandates on COVID is akin to a crime against our children. If ever justice returns to this earth, there will one day be.
Can we shut off those microphones, please?
Town moderator, do you want him to be removed? Is that your request?
Ms. Gonzalez, the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
If we could all rise and face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We have a motion to dispense with the reading of the warrant.
I move to dispense with the reading of the warrant and to refer to the articles by number, and further, to dispense with the reading of the return of service by the constable.
We have the motion. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article one, Ms. Gonzalez.
Hear and act on reports of town officers and committees. I move to hear reports of town officers and committees as may be presented at this meeting.
As I understand it, the Finance Committee would like to make a presentation. Sorry, the Facilities Master Planning Committee.
Hi, good evening. Hopefully these mics, I'm too short for half of them half the time. Article 11, which called for the financing of the final phase and construction drawings for the fire department renovation, is being passed over tonight because those funds were voted by the selectmen to come out of the ARPA money. So I'm giving a review of what has happened to date and where we're going with it, since there won't be any discussion when Article 11 comes up. The fire station renovation, the renovation of the police station was complete in 2007. At the time, there were murmurs about the possibility of renovating the fire station. However, the town moved on to the bachelor school project followed by the high school, middle school complex. The time has now come when we must consider renovating our fire station. A year ago, the weekend of the Apple Festival, when townspeople would be visiting the center of town, the fire station held an open house to allow residents a chance to tour the building, see current conditions, and view preliminary drawings for a potential renovation, and to ask any questions they might have. The Facilities Master Plan Committee then went to October Town Meeting a year ago to request additional funds to enter into the schematic design phase. This phase has been completed by the architect, with a great deal of input from Chief Stats and his leadership team in the Fire Department. Planning meeting participants discussing the proposed renovation with the architects have included, as available, Fire Department representatives, DPW representatives, the town administrator, members of the Facilities Master Plan, and other interested parties. It has been a team effort. Turn the page. Everyone needs a service animal and a page turner. Shared ideas. Primary design objectives, which were included in the schematic design phase, were to expand the apparatus bay to accommodate additional vehicles. In case you're unaware of it, most new fire apparatus is bigger than it used to be. And in addition, to relieve the congested access to maintain them. We also wanted to provide separation between the apparatus bay, where both equipment and firefighters return from an event covered with toxic materials, and the clean zone that includes living quarters and the administrative areas. Typically, a modern firehouse has a hot area, that would be the equipment bay where the trucks come in and where the guys get off their trucks, and they're all full of whatever. A warm area, which would be where they shower and change, and then a cold area, which would be offices, administrative stuff, and their living quarters. By doing this and separating them, it creates a safer environment for all fire station personnel. We also wanted to provide flexibility in the living quarters so that both men and women can be accommodated in rooms that offer privacy, not available in the current dormitory configuration. Replacing all the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and fire protection systems that currently exceed their useful life with efficient and sustainable systems, and provide expansion space to meet the demands of a growing population in North Reading. We have been able to create a plan to renovate and expand the facility to meet these goals. Because the site leaves little space for horizontal expansion, we needed to add another floor above the current apparatus bay. Furthermore, the design takes advantage of the site sloping down a full story from the front of the building to the back where the parking lot is, so that the apparatus bay can expand above the parking and roadway without taking up space on the ground. Based on the schematic plans completed this past August, a few months ago, the construction costs are estimated to be $18,300,000 for construction only. The estimate assumes the construction start date of this summer or fall, and includes both escalation and contingencies. This number does not include soft costs, a few of which would be furniture, fixtures, and equipment, owner's project manager, and temporary quarters for the fire personnel and equipment. Soft costs are estimated to be approximately 25% of construction costs. We are here before you tonight to bring you up to date. The next phase is final design and construction bid documents. As we progress through this last phase, final plans coordinated with the architectural and structural plans will be generated. Specific materials will be selected, providing more detail, and the construction and the project cost estimates will be updated as this phase takes place. Hopefully, and I think it's both the architects as well as the Facilities Master Plan Committee's goal, is to make sure on an ongoing basis that these estimates, unless something horrible happens, all stay very close to what the original estimate has been. In the spring of 2024, we anticipate reviewing the final design and construction budget with the Select Board and requesting funding for the construction of the firehouse renovation at the June 2024 Town Meeting. And so thank you very much for listening to all of this, and it's been a really exciting project to be working on, and I'm glad that we're able to go forward, at least to this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We also have a report from Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Not a report, just two quick announcements. One is actually a reminder that the town, for many years, has had a two-barrel limit for what you can throw out, trash you can throw out on your trash night. What is new, as of late last year, is the availability of overflow bags that you can buy at various retail outlets in town. So anything you have over two barrels, you're welcome to throw away as much as you want. These bags are available, again, at various retail outlets in town. You can buy them in rolls of 20. The other thing newer, actually, is a composting program. This is independent of the town, except that the town went out, found a preferred provider, and arranged a deal. The town is, so this is something that households enter into themselves, but what the town is doing for the first 200 households that sign up is providing the starter kits for free. So come see me about either of these things later. By the way, John Rogers, Chair of the Recycling Committee, sorry. The other quick announcement, and I want to thank Director Parisi, DPW Director Parisi, the DPW staff, and my colleagues on the committee, and particularly Dan Greenberg, for these initiatives. The other initiative we're going to ask to pass over, Article 20, which you'll see in the warrant, this is the one principally about takeout containers, about polystyrene, and I will say, we're excited about this. We also had some conversations with the Board of Health, and they've agreed to work with us, see how we can come to some agreements about it, and bring it back to you in June, we hope. So look for that, just not tonight. Thanks very much.
Should I? Okay, great. Thank you. Any discussion on the reports that's presented? We have the motion before us. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article two.
Prior year bills. I move to authorize payment of bills of a prior fiscal year from the fiscal year 2024 operating budget voted under Article 19 of the June 12, 2023 Annual Town Meeting as follows. Meeting expense in the amount of $40 to be paid from Line 40 Fire Department expenses. Repairs to cemetery trailer in the amount of $185 to be paid from Line 52 Public Works expenses, as specified in Article 2 as printed in the warrant.
We have the motion. Recommendation from the Select Board?
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any further discussion? This is a prior year bill, requires a four-fifth vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article three.
Appropriate money to stabilize station fund. I move to pass over Article three as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board?
Select Board recommends passing over.
For the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends passing over.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article four, Ms. Gonzalez.
Transfer funds to the capital improvement stabilization fund. I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $250,000 to be added to the capital improvement stabilization fund, as specified in Article four as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board?
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Mr. Wallner. Article five.
Good evening, everyone. Article five is to appropriate money to solid waste stabilization fund. I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $26,304 to be added to the solid waste stabilization fund, as specified in Article five as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board?
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous?
Article six, appropriate money to participating fund arrangement fund. I move to transfer from free cash the sum of $198,496 to be added to the participating fund arrangement fund, as specified in Article six as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation from the Select Board?
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article seven, Mr. Wallner.
Article seven is to amend fiscal year 2024 operating budget. I move to amend the fiscal year 2024 operating budget voted under Article 19 of the June 12, 2023 Spring Annual Town Meeting as follows. Increase Line 101 debt service by $179,000 to be funded from free cash. Amend Line 105 water department debt to be funded by $240,766 from Water Enterprise retained earnings, and $847,576 from water revenue. Increase Line 107 Hillview Country Club expenses to be funded by $146,900 from Hillview revenue. Increase Line 112 Parks and Recreation salaries by $25,060 to be funded from recreation revenue, and increase Line 113 Parks and Recreation expenses by $44,390 to be funded from recreation revenue, as specified in Article seven as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board?
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Is that right? So there should be two different, 112 and 113, for two different dollar amounts. Any rebuttal?
Yeah.
Finance Committee recommends? Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Capazudo? You need to go to the mic. Please, if you're seeking recognition, go to the microphone.
Yes, hi, Lori Capazudo, 12 Dwayne Drive. I'm just curious, in the warrant, there was a mention of including funding for the first year of certain collective bargaining agreements, and I didn't see any comment about that. I'm just curious if you could comment on that?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So that's standard language that we put in to alert the community that it is possible we will be funding the first year of a collective bargaining agreement. However, we are not doing so in this motion.
Okay, thank you.
Article eight. Mr. Wallner?
Article eight, rescind authorization to borrow. I move to rescind the authorization to borrow $65,000 for the project entitled North Central Street Intersection Design, and the authorization to borrow $197,000 for the project entitled North Central Street Intersection Construction, both of which were approved in the fiscal year 2024 capital expenditures approved under Article 25 of the June 12, 2023 Spring Annual Town Meeting, as specified in Article eight as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board?
Select Board recommends.
For the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article nine, Mr. Studo.
Article nine, amend fiscal year 2024 capital budget. I move to amend the fiscal year 2024 capital expenditures approved under Article 25 of the June 12, 2023 Annual Town Meeting by making supplemental appropriations as follows. $75,000 from free cash for hood school boiler replacement to be expended on the school department. $300,000 from free cash for kids' spot renovations to be expended by the Parks and Recreation Department. $600,000 from free cash for Boroughs Road Bridge design and construction to be expanded by the Department of Public Works, and to amend the funding source for the capital project entitled Replace 2012 Ford Escape with F-150 Hybrid to be funded by $55,000 from Water Enterprise retained earnings, as specified in Article nine as printed in
Recommendation from the Select Board?
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article 10, Mr. Studo.
Article 10, appropriate money for legal expenses, 20 Elm Street litigation. I move to pass over Article 10 as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board, Mr. Studo.
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends passing over.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article 11, Mr. Studo.
Article 11, appropriate money for fire station design, development, and construction documents. I move to pass over Article 11 as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board?
Select Board recommends passing over.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends passing over.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article 12, Mr. Studo.
Article 12, appropriate money for bridge culvert study. I move to appropriate from free cash the sum of $75,000 to fund the bridge culvert study, including all costs incidental and related thereto, as specified in Article 12 as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation from the Select Board?
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Pat, please go to the microphone.
[inaudible 24 field press there, it's just a question, because I'm looking at the words, "bridge culvert study." This stuff has to be done, and all of this stuff should have been studied, Chestnut Street was studied a long time ago. Barbara Grove, we're sinking. We need something done, not just studied.
Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. So this is intended to evaluate the condition of the probably dozens of culverts and bridges in the community that we have not looked closely at. You've named one or two that we are well aware of the condition of, but the reality is that there are many that are much smaller than those that have significant consequence. So this is admittedly a first step in getting our arms around what their condition is. I expect that this will result in requests before Town Meeting for capital funding to make either repairs, reconstruction, or replacement of other bridges or culverts in the future. I know everyone saw, we just appropriated $600,000 to what we hope will be a reconstruction of the Boroughs Road culvert. We will be back here looking for funding for Chestnut Street for construction in June, potentially, but this is the first step.
Okay, but you're saying, first step, the next step is going, am I understanding it correctly, the next Town Meeting? Or, because, as you know, and I spoke to you about it in the past, Barbara Grove, for one, is sinking. There's holes that have been patched up, and town's doing a great job, but those patches don't last forever. So just saying that it's putting on, you're putting it on the back burner until So just saying that it's putting on, you're putting it on the back burner until the next town meeting. You know, what's going to happen between now and next town meeting?
Mr. Ma- Mr. Gilberto.
Mr. Moderator, through you, I don't want to go backwards in the articles, but that six hundred thousand dollars for Boroughs Road, we hope it will be for design and for a permanent reconstruction of the bridge. Unfortunately, we're not the only people that get to make that decision. The State Department of Transportation and environmental permitting authorities have a say. We're going to do our best to show that we have a plan to reconstruct if it's feasible. Um, if it proves to not be feasible because of either the condition of the road or because the permitting authorities won't let it happen, it's possible we could be back here for additional funding for construction. But both Boroughs Road and Chestnut Street are on the so-called fast track, even though it sounds like they're not. Um, and while I, while I have the microphone for anyone who's wondering why construction has not begun on Chestnut Street, it's because we are still in the midst of a design process and an extensive transportation department and environmental permitting authority design process that need to sign off on the bridge before we can actually reconstruct it. We're going to get to that in a couple of articles as well. It's a very important article on the Article ninety-seven issue that we can speak to at that point. Thank you, Ms. Fillmore.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Article, Article thirteen, Ms. Gonzalez.
Authorize Article ninety-seven home rule petition for Chestnut Street Bridge. I move to approve Article thirteen as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the select board.
Select board recommends.
Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion. Mr. Gilberto.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, just following up on the conversation a moment ago. This is a required action for us to proceed with the design on the Chestnut Street Bridge. There is a portion of land that is owned by the town and is under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission to the southwest, um, of Chestnut Street. So if you're headed toward, um, Park Street, it'd be on your left-hand side just past the DPW garage. Um, that area, again, under the control of the Conservation Commission, it is protected, um, from a use other than for open space or recreation. Uh, we do need to seek approval from the state legislature in order to be able to, uh, place a one corner of an abutment on that property in order to properly design the bridge. Um, many of you are aware of the design that we're working on with the Department of Public Works and the state would call, call for, um, free access under the bridge, uh, on the river, um, improving access to the Conservation Commission land, um, by water, um, if folks so choose. Uh, but again, as I mentioned, this is one that's on the, um, the, the, if not the fast track, the faster track. The one I failed to mention was the Park Street Bridge, which you all, um, had a hand in appropriating funding for over the past couple of years as well. That also is going to be addressed, um, in the next, um, couple of construction seasons. So, um, we're making progress. I recognize that it's slow, but these are substantial infrastructure projects that take quite a bit of planning and permitting to get across the finish line. The construction itself is actually fairly short in time, but the planning work is extensive. And as I mentioned earlier, the previous article was to look at the other areas where we might need to do this in town that maybe aren't as visible. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article fourteen, Ms. Gonzalez.
Appropriate money to opioid settlement special purpose stabilization fund. I move to transfer for forty-eight thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventeen cents received in FY 2023 as opioid settlement funds from free cash to the opioid special purpose stabilization fund approved under Article fourteen of the June twelfth, twenty twenty-three spring annual town meeting as further specified in Article fourteen as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation from the select board.
Select board recommends.
Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article fifteen, Ms. Gonzalez.
Appropriate money for substance abuse treatment mitigation and prevention. I move to appropriate twenty-five thousand dollars from free cash for substance abuse treatment mitigation and prevention, including any and all costs related thereto as specified in Article fifteen as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation from the select board.
Select board recommends.
From the finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article sixteen, Ms. Gonzalez.
Create and transfer funds into secondary building project debt service special purpose stabilization fund. I move to create a special purpose stabilization fund to be used for the future payment of debt service associated with the secondary school building project and to transfer two million, six hundred twenty-four thousand, five hundred twenty-nine dollars from free cash into said fund as further specified in Article sixteen as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the select board.
Select board recommends.
Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article seventeen, Ms. Gonzalez.
Appropriate money to cover grant deficits. I move to appropriate from free cash the amount of fifteen thousand, ten dollars to fund a deficit in the state nine-one-one grant and two thousand eighty-nine dollars to fund a deficit in the state community compact grant as specified in Article seventeen as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the select board.
Select board recommends.
Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article eighteen, Mr. O'Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article eighteen, authorize Hillview Commission to enter into golf course management contracts for terms in excess of three years. I move pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty B, Section twelve, to authorize the Hillview Commission with the approval of the town administrator to enter into contracts for golf course management services for terms in excess of three years as specified in Article eighteen as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation from the select board.
Select board unanimously recommends.
Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. O'Leary.
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, we're here this evening looking for, uh, an exception to the Mass General Laws to authorize the Hillview Commission and the town administrator to enter into contracts to operate the Hillview Golf Course, uh, and facility in excess of three years. Current statute only allows for three years. However, the exception in general laws, if it's accepted by town meeting, would authorize, uh, the Hillview Commission to do so. As you're well aware, the Hillview Commission and the, uh, Hillview Enterprise has been a very successful, um, operation for our community for the last thirty-five years. Uh, we have had to come to town meeting previously, um, for instance, on the, uh, golf cart contracts. There are very few vendors out there, uh, in the golf cart business, um, which we're looking for five-year contracts. In order to do that, we had to come to town meeting to get authorization. Same thing with the, uh, as we're going out to bid for the golf, um, management, uh, contract this year. The commission is moving forward with a three-year proposal right now. However, if the proposals don't come back favorable for the town, they would have the opportunity to go for a five-year with a five-year, uh, renewal. Uh, but we can't do that without town meeting authorization. So what we're looking to do is put in place a mechanism for which the Hillview can operate as a business, which it is, so that we're not limited to the three-year contracts. So we're asking you for your approval at this particular point in time. It makes good prudent business sense to allow us to do so, and, uh, we would urge you to support it.
Further discussion. Ma'am.
Act 24 Field Press Terrace. So you're saying to exceed the length of time. You're saying in excess of three years, you're going to put a cap on that so that it's only five years or it's ten years or is there no cap?
There is no, there is not necessarily a cap, but what happens is, uh, depending upon what the marketplace is, will determine what they will be putting out there for proposals and request for proposals. What happens is from a timing standpoint, if you think about it like right now, they're going out to bid for the golf management contract. It expires this spring. If the proposals don't come back in a favorable light, we can't go out, we meaning the town, Hillview Commission, town administrator, can't go out and seek new proposals in excess of three years, which may be in our best interest. So that we would have to wait till June town meeting to get the approval to do that. Most of these contracts have to be let and looked at, you know, within a year of the expiration date. So it doesn't make sense to do it. The checks and balances here is that under the charter, the town administrator's position is the only authorized position to sign contracts for the town. The Board of Selectmen can't do it, Hillview Commission can't do it, and that's the checks and balances here in place so that the, uh, high, the, the paid professionals, uh, again, have the full authority of the charter to do so. So we're looking for authorization to enable us to not have to come back to town meeting, to be able to sign the contracts on a timely basis and just get it done. I don't anticipate, and I've never seen anything generally in excess of five years, um, in the thirty-five years that we've been here doing, doing the business. So again, it just is a prudent practice to put into place to allow the authorization of the town administrator, with the town administrator's approval, to sign a contract. Thank you for the question.
Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article nineteen, Mr. Pierce.
Article nineteen, authorize conveyance of town-owned land for affordable housing at seven Saint Teresa Street. I move that the town transfer from the tax title custodian to the select board for general municipal purposes, including the purpose of conveyance, the care, custody, and control of that certain parcel of land known as seven Saint Teresa Street, identified as parcel one oh one on Town Estates' map thirteen. It'd be more particularly described in that deed recorded with the Southern Middlesex Registry of Deeds in Book fifteen, three ninety-four, page seventy-five, and authorize the select board to convey said parcel or any portion thereof for the sole purpose of securing the construction there on or one or two residential units of affordable housing to be maintained as such in perpetuity and upon such further terms and conditions and for such consideration as the select board deems appropriate, including for no consideration as specified in Article nineteen as printed in the warrant.
Can we, can we have the recommendation from the select board?
Select board unanimously recommends.
For the finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
Mr. Pierce, for the Community Planning Commission?
The Community Planning Commission recommends.
Further discussion? Ms. Knight.
Thank you. Um, the town of North Reading owns twenty-three properties, which encompass the Affordable Housing Overlay District. This is a zoning district of properties scattered throughout the town, um, that was intended for small to moderate-scale affordable housing development. The district was put into place by town meeting in two thousand and seven, um, and the twenty-three properties were designated in the town's twenty-eighteen housing production plan as priorities for development. However, all the parcels in this district still remain undeveloped. In order to further the town's efforts to create new affordable housing opportunities, the Community Planning Commission sponsored a warrant article at the October twenty-twenty-one town meeting to convey four of the properties within the district, one of which was seven Saint Teresa Street. At that time, the article did not pass. Residents expressed concern about the lack of updated information about nearby wetlands and seven Saint Teresa Street had, seven Saint Teresa Street had also been under consideration at that time for another municipal facility. In two thousand and twenty-two, town meeting appropriated funds to allow the CPC to further study the properties by completing wetlands delineations and surveyed plans in order to best understand their development potential. At this time, the CPC has prioritized the property at seven Saint Teresa Street as the first of four properties to propose again for conveyance since it is thought to be the most easily developed of those under consideration. With the updated survey and wetlands information now available for that property, the CPC has again sponsored an article in order to give the select board authority to convey this property for affordable housing purposes. The intent of the conveyance would be to develop a single-family house or a two-family duplex or two small single-family houses, um, for development on that property. If the article passes, the next step would be to draft and put out a request for proposals to allow developers to submit development proposals. This RFP would be expected to include limitations on development, including limitation to either one or two units ensuring affordability of the new housing in perpetuity and imposing requirements for engineering review by the town or the town's own consultants. This would ensure that there would be no negative impacts either to wetlands or any abutting properties and that drainage is handled properly. Thank you.
Further discussion. Do you have a question or you want to discuss?
Hi, Lori Capazudo, twelve Dwayne Drive. I, you talk really fast. So I'm just curious, where does this put us in terms of our chapter forty B percentage for North Reading?
Ms. Knight.
Thank you. Um, we are still just under ten percent with the new census figures. We're a little bit lower than we were before, which was nine point five nine percent. Now we are, I don't want to give you the wrong figure, but it's not below nine point four. It's, 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 it's still under ten, though.
So we're still under?
Oh, we're still under, yes.
Thank you.
Further discussion. Mr. O'Leary.
If town meeting recalls of the last couple of meetings, as Danielle had pointed out, uh, they came forth with a proposal with four different parcels for affordable housing. And at that time, the board was in favor of the idea and the parcels that were being, uh, proposed. However, we had some concerns in relation to the delineation of wetlands and what could actually be done on it. And we asked town meeting to not pass it at that particular time and charge the planning commission to go back and do the wetlands delineation so that we would know what our properties, what could be done on the properties that we own that we had set aside. And I want to applaud the efforts of the planning commission and the planner for taking the initiative and taking the bull by the horns and doing it. And this is the first step of one of those parcels coming forth for affordable housing. So that the board unanimously recommends, uh, that we pass this.
Further discussion. Seeing none, this requires a two-thirds vote as it's the conveyance of land. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Article twenty, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to pass over Article twenty as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation from the select board, Mr. O'Leary.
Select board recommends.
Finance committee.
Finance committee recommends.
Further discussion? Mr. O'Leary.
Yeah, just as indicated by Mr. Rogers earlier, the, um, recycling committee has been meeting, had met with the Board of Health to talk about the proposal. The Board of Health endorsed the proposal, but had some concerns in relation to public input and wanted some more additional input themselves and are in support of the idea. And the plan is to bring it back to, uh, June town meeting for your consideration. So again, I want to congratulate the recycling committee for the initiative, uh, and the Board of Health for joining and partnering with them to do so. And, um, you'll see them again in June, so we urge you to vote in favor of passing over.
Please go to the microphone if you're seeking recognition. Sir. Sir?
Good evening. Thank you, Paul DiNero, four hundred and two Park Street. Is this about the plastic bags? And what is this about?
Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, through you. No, this is actually about polystyrene. So this is, this is an initiative to, to address polystyrene, the use of polystyrene in North Reading. So it's commonly used, it's often used in takeout containers. It doesn't have to be, there are other options.
Because my, my only comment was, I thought this is what it was, and I'm saying here we're handing out, not handing out, but telling people where they can get plastic bags. Are they polystyrene?
No, apologies for that. That had to do with the overflow bags, which are now available for use for trash if you're above the two-barrel limit that the town has had for, for many years.
So what types of things in the home are polystyrene, like water bottles or milk bottles?
No, this is really what we're looking at, as it, as it says there, I mean, the chief focus of this is things that are used by food establishments, for which there are other options, often cheaper.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article twenty-one, Mr. Pierce.
Mr. Moderator, Article twenty-one, street acceptance of Eaton Circle. I move to accept the layout of Eaton Circle as a public way as laid out by the Select Board and shown on street acceptance Eaton Circle in North Reading, Mass., dated July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, and to authorize the Select Board to acquire by purchase, gift, eminent domain, or otherwise the fee or lesser interest in the land within said way, and any easements related thereto, and to further raise and appropriate the sum of one dollar for said purposes as specified in Article twenty-one as printed in the warrant.
Recommendation for the Select Board? Mr. O'Leary?
Select Board recommends.
Finance Committee recommendations?
Finance Committee recommends.
Mr. Pierce?
The Planning Board recommends.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Article twenty-two. Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Moderator, I move to approve Article twenty-two as printed in the warrant, except that the title of the proposed special act should reference that the in-service date is January first, nineteen eighty-eight, and not July first, nineteen eighty-eight, as indicated in the body of the proposed special act.
Recommendation from the Select Board, Mr. O'Leary?
Select Board recommends.
For the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends.
Further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Let me just at first take the liberty of expressing our condolences and appreciation on the passing of Lieutenant Detective Romeo's mother, Patricia Romeo, who served this community for dozens and dozens and dozens of years in various capacities, you know, whether it be the Historical Society, the Planning Commission, mentor to many of us in public service, and certainly a vocal advocate for all sorts of programs in the community that made the community better. So Tom, from us, you know, our condolences. So, Mr. Moderator, we stand before you today asking town meeting to authorize a home rule petition. Like a home rule petition is required for this matter because of a mistake that was made by the Middlesex County Retirement System when Lieutenant Detective Romeo retired last January. As many of you are aware, Lieutenant Romeo served us for thirty-eight years, served this community in the Police Department. He started in nineteen eighty-five as a Special Reserve Officer full-time, and then came on the department in nineteen eighty-eight. Back in nineteen eighty-eight, the state legislature passed some legislation to tweak the public pension law, and Lieutenant Romeo got caught up in it. As many of you are aware, people who make decisions as to when to retire, you know, it's a life-changing decision that has to be made. When's the appropriate time? Can we afford to do so? And how much revenue are we going to have in order to afford to, to live and move on in the next chapter of our lives together? Well, Tom and his wife had made these decisions, and in order to do that as a public employee, you have to go to the Retirement Authority, which is the Middlesex County Retirement Board. So prior to retiring, you go and you put in a, an application and say, tell me what I'm going to get. Tom did that and did all the things he was supposed to do. The town and the administration was very much aware as to what the impact was going to be and what those numbers were at the time, and they made a mistake. And that mistake is like an eighteen thousand dollar mistake. They underestimated, excuse me, they overestimated by eighteen thousand dollars based upon a false calculation, based upon their mistake, that Tom would not be entitled to what he was told he was going to get. And the reason that the mistake was made was because of that little change that was made back in nineteen eighty-eight. Tom came on like in July of nineteen eighty-eight. The legislation that was passed was effective January first, and it has to do with credible service and in-service, which I don't want to get into the details. But Tom was actually an employee of the Town of North Reading since nineteen eighty-five, but the first three years, he wasn't paying into the retirement system because of the status of the employee that he had here at the town. He bought those years back in nineteen ninety for credible service to get credit for retirement purposes and paid into the retirement system back to nineteen eighty-five, way back in nineteen ninety. When he went to the Retirement Board, the Retirement Board did the calculations based upon the nineteen eighty-five date, which would seem to be the appropriate date because that's the service, when he first started with the Town of North Reading, he paid into the system to get the credit for those years, and they did their calculation based on that, that date. As it was going through, so then Tom had to make some choices now. Great, he has the number, he knows exactly what it was going to be, and he and his wife decide, all right, now's the time, we can afford to move on to the next chapter in our life. Fast forward six months after retirement, he gets notified, we made a mistake. And that mistake is to the tune of eighteen thousand dollars a year, and by the way, you owe us back to January for the difference. So you got to start paying us back. You can imagine what the shock was. The mistake that was made was an honest one, but one, and the only, an honest one that can be corrected, and it's not the first time this has happened. Because of the dates involved, it had to be, have in-service date as of January first, nineteen eighty-eight. He came like in April nineteen eighty-five. So he didn't have a full year for nineteen eighty-eight, and they didn't count the three years that he bought back and paid into the system for, because the legislation at the time didn't allow for that to happen. It was specifically designed to avoid the pension system paying people who were almost sort of double-dipping from different jobs, whether it be through military service, through service in other retirement systems and, and all the rest. People were buying back a whole bunch of time and getting credit for service when they weren't really in-service. It was not designed to penalize people like Tom. So this was an honest mistake, it was brought to the board's attention. The board unanimously agrees that we should take some action to correct it. And what we're asking the legislature to do is to consider his January nineteen eighty-five date as his start date, which would make him eligible under the law that was changed in nineteen eighty-eight, and give him what he deserves and what he's earned and what he was told he was going to get. If this doesn't go through, he's penalized, for the rest of his life, eighteen thousand dollars for a mistake that he didn't make. And think about it, if you or I were to sit down with our spouses and significant others and say, it's about time to retire, and oops, someone made a mistake, and I've already made my choice, and I can't change it, I can't go back, I can't come back to work for the Town of North Reading and put more service in to get what I thought I was going to be getting, how would you react? You know, is there a solution? Is there anything that can be done? What can be done is a special act, approved by you, Representative Jones and Senator Tar can be filed, and ask the legislature to allow Tom to be recognized for his years of service, and we're asking, and the board is unanimous in supporting this effort. As far as the consequences associated with, you know, what's the cost of town? When Lieutenant Romeo filed for his retirement, we were aware of the numbers that were given to him as to what the impact, as to what our contribution would have to be going forward. So there's no new news here as far as the administration was concerned, as far as the board is concerned, or as far as town meeting would be concerned. Basically, it's going to be another year before we even get billed for it, and when the Retirement Board sends us the bill, we pay it. We pay for the cost of our retirees. So the only one that is being harmed here is Lieutenant Detective Romeo and his family. We can correct the error, we can help correct the error and ask the legislature to endorse and support what we're asking here tonight. So we would ask you to please support this. Happy to answer any questions, and we should give this gentleman exactly what he has due. He's put in thirty-eight years for us, devoted service, for which we're extremely grateful, and we should just follow through with what he was told he was entitled to. He shouldn't have to take this hit, and there's no undoing it except through this methodology. So we ask your support.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in...
Mr. DiNero. Mr. DiNero?
Hello, my name is, my name is Paul DiNero, four hundred and two Park Street. Mr. O'Leary, I can see your passion for this gentleman, and I have no, no, you know, I, I think it's a good, good, good thing, but I, I can't pass up the opportunity to comment on your feelings about this officer who spent all these years, and there's some mistake as far as when he started. And you're, you're saying that, can you imagine, I couldn't hear you that well, can you imagine sitting down with your wife or, or husband or spouse, whatever you, you had said, and talk about the, the money that it costs you? And, and here, you know, we're, we're going to be later this year, or spring or something, be voting on the wastewater project, and, and I'd mentioned in the past how difficult it would be to sit down with your family and, and, and say that we can't send you to college, or we can't help you buy a car, or we can't put a new roof on the house and everything else because it's going to cost us, you know, fifty thousand dollars by the time you're, you're all done. So I want you to hear what you've said, I want to kind of mirror that back to you and how desperate the abutters are feeling about the wastewater project. So I thank you for, for your concern for expenses, especially in these days and ages with inflation and everything else, but to hopefully, you know, I, I'd love to say, could we, could we barter, you know, swap this gentleman's pension for the wastewater, just to let the wastewater go, and we'll all vote in favor of, of the pension. Just a thought to consider. Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary?
Yeah, again, thank you for your, for your comments, and again, my, my passion and concern is directed, yes, for Lieutenant Romeo at this particular point, but I would be standing here in the same, with the same passion in relation to any other public employee who was caught in the same situation because they were wronged. In relation to, you know, the decisions that people have to make for any of the proposals that are taught, brought forward, you know, for your consideration, I have the same level of concern and passion and understanding and recognize that people's situations are different. And again, I would just ask town meeting for approval. Thank you.
Rita?
Rita Mullin, twenty, Abbott Road, twenty-nine Abbott Road. I just want to make sure that we stick to the topic, and we are, the town is righting the wrong that they did, they're taking care of a situation should have been taken care of. Hopefully, we'll find a way to check the rest of our books and make sure everybody's all, you know, everything's correct at town hall or the schools, wherever they are, to make sure everybody's retirement, but give the man his due, and I want to take the time to thank him very, very much for his years of service, and if it's okay, you don't have to, I'm asking for a standing ovation. The man has been a wonderful policeman and protected every one of us for over thirty years. Thank you very much, Mr. Romeo. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you. Representative Jones will do his job.
I'll entertain one more motion, my favorite one.
I move to adjourn this meeting. Sinay, tina. Did I say that right? Sinay? We're adjourning.
On the motion to adjourn, discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Have a great evening, what's left of it. Thank you all.